Testing, testing, one, two, three, four. I don't know if you can hear anything. Can you hear me at all? Is it coming through? Testing, it's coming through on here. I'm gonna move this to see if there's movement.
Testing, 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 testing.
Yes.
This? That's just electric.
Testing, testing. Can you hear out of this mic? This is the facilitator's mic. Testing, testing. It's coming through on here. Testing. Check, one, two, three. Check.
I don't think so. Nothing would fly the signal. Except this edge right here, because it's got stuff on it. So... Yeah. Say that again. Oh, we didn't buy some, okay. That's my choice. Water keeps falling. Okay. Yeah, I agree. Well, because she can hit them on camera.
Would it be better if there was some?
Yes. Are you... Was it breathing? Like, try this one.
Sorry. Should we put the triples at the end? Yeah, I want those two together. Ally, are you up there?
Yeah.
Charlie, nice to meet you. Thanks for having me, Dean. Thanks for having me. Yeah, yeah. You know, somebody I used to play softball with. Robin, you feel so far away.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to commence with our Town Hall Panel on Recovery. Want to welcome each and every one of you, and since I have my reading glasses on, I can't see you anyway, so, you know, it is what it is. What's next? The Town Hall meeting focused on addiction recovery. This is, I believe, the third Town Hall event that's occurred here in Fulton County since 2016. You have a program, or if not, hopefully you picked one up. Some literature in the back. This is part of Project SAFE, which I would highly encourage you to become a member of, as it's a group of individuals who truly care about their community and want to do everything they can to make their community even better. Substance addiction often isolates people from their loved ones. They become cut off from the people that they care most about, and the addiction takes center stage in their lives. Therefore, when someone decides to end their addiction, they may think that their recovery is a solitary experience. But the truth is that recovery is best achieved with help through various stages and with many, many people and support. Individuals have to work at restoring their damaged relationships. Individuals have to work hard to gain back trust with those that they love and care about. This restoration of relationships presents many challenges to individuals and their families. Some of the challenges are trust, this actual re-establishment, forgiveness and willingness to create a fresh start, and that's a huge part of the process. Recovery must promote autonomy, belonging, empowerment, personhood, and social inclusion and community participation. Tonight, all of us are here because of community participation. We are a community in recovery. Tonight's panel discussion is about all six that I mentioned there, but again, we're going to focus on community and the individual. I want to thank the panelists ahead of time for their participation, their knowledge, their insight, and their resources. I want to thank the audience a while for your time, your participation, your respect, and your understanding and willingness to learn from those on our panel who are willing to share this evening. Again, we are a community and we are a family. We may not have the same last names, we may not share the same address, but what we do share is we share each other in the state of humanity. With that being said, I would like to introduce our panel. And we will start down at the end. From the Pennsylvania State Police, we have Corporal Ellis Barnett, we have Trooper Samuel Lech...
Leach?
Leach?
Lech.
Lech. Lecht, there we go. Mike Straele... Oh, no, Mike, we skipped over someone. We're not in order. Charlene Kane from Brooks House. Mike Straeley from Leah's Legacy. Samantha Smith, who is RN and the Trauma Program Manager at Fulton County Medical Center. And Ally Washabel, who is a CRS Specialist at Gadenzia. Whether you realize it or not, we have a very, very good panel here this evening, folks. A lot of knowledge, a lot of intelligence on this group. How we're going to set the evening into motion is we have a series of questions that I'm going to pose. I have received several questions online from individuals, and then we will open up for questions from you in the audience, for any of the panelists. Again, though, we are not here to accuse judge. We're here to ask questions and learn and understand. This is brought to you this evening by Project SAFE. And for those of you who do not know what Project SAFE is, Project SAFE formed out of the 2016 opioid crisis, when Fulton County per capita was number one in the state of Pennsylvania for overdose deaths. Per capita, keep that in mind. Philadelphia per number, but Fulton County per capita. At that point, a group of individuals, many individuals, decided we have to do something. We cannot bury our heads in the sand and pretend that this will not happen or is not happening. And the response is, a group of individuals came together and created a mission statement. They created a strategic plan, and over the last three years have worked diligently to work to end stigma in our community, expand capacity for treatment in our community, look at data and research. Hopefully, you would do that in each of your lives when you look into making decisions. Looking at warm handoffs, use of Narcan in our community, and most importantly, not that the rest do not have importance, but educate individuals. And why I say most important, because that's why we're here this evening. I may be asking the questions, but as I've said to a couple people, I'm excited to hear the answers, because for me, this is a learning opportunity, because the questions that are going to be posed, I do not have the answers for. So I'm hoping the panelists will do that. Again, welcome. And without further ado, I would like to pose the first question to the panel. And obviously, as panelists, if you feel comfortable answering that question, feel free to do so. I would like to not have to call on anyone. That would make it seem very much like we're in school or something, so... So we'll start with why we're here, and that is with recovery. The question is, what is recovery? And what is involved in the recovery process from your seat at the table? And jump into the water, and away we go.
Okay. Well, as a recovery specialist, the definition of recovery in the dictionary is to return to normal health, mind, or strength. And it's also the process of regaining something lost. So with that said, it's something completely individualized. For me, it was beekeeping, having a daughter, and making better choices in my life. For other people, that may be a 12-step program, Smart Recovery. It can look different for anybody. It can be yoga. The process is really just becoming connected again, because you lose all those connections when you're inactive addiction. So becoming connected to your family, your support system, to support groups in your community, and that's about it.
I know for our daughter, who my wife and I lost on Valentine's Day 2018, she's forever 26. And for us, the best treatment that she received was in California and at various sober living homes, especially in California. And when she had the sober living home, and her friends and her peers were with her, and everything was planned out for her, especially early on in her recovery, she succeeded. And she was amongst her peers, and she thrived. She had also been in recovery homes where she had to depend on herself for maybe a part-time job, or providing her own transportation to get to the various meetings and the therapies and things like that. And it was a struggle, because there was a lot of stress. There's already a lot of stress when you're in recovery. And then the undue stress of trying to figure out life skills, dare I say, life planning. She really struggled with that. She really struggled with that. So to Ally's point, you know, networking with finding your niche, finding something new, you know, just trying to expand your life skills, trying to figure out what's going to work best. That's where she thrived, and you know, she surrounded herself with good folks. And when she did that, she thrived, and when she didn't, she struggled.
So recovery for me, I'm a little over tears clean now from all alcohol, drugs, mind-altering substances. I found it in a 12-step program. And in that 12-step program, they taught me how to love myself, how to give back to the community, how to be a part of something, find my purpose in life. And that's what I did. I found my purpose in life, and I'm giving that back now. I work in a recovery house. So I'm able to take what I've learned, and I'm getting better educated myself, so I can better educate myself and those that I serve. But recovery's not easy. I had to unlearn a lot of things. I tore, you know, I left a trail of destruction in my life. So sometimes fixing that's not always easy either, but you know, living every moment just for the moment helps me through each day. So I have a huge network, and that's in the 12-step program. I've started networking outside of that, so like I get involved with the community, you know, things like this. It's kind of uncomfortable sitting up right here right now, I'm not used to this. But, um, but you know, giving back and answering people's questions that don't know. You know, some people are ignorant to the idea and still want to put the stigma on people, and that's not fair, you know, so. I had to find purpose and love myself and stay connected to my network. For those of you familiar with the 12-step program, I have a sponsor, I have a network, I go to meetings, I work the steps. I sponsor women now, you know, so it's all about keeping it going and keeping it moving, for me and my life, anyway, so.
All right. Unfortunately for us within law enforcement, we don't have much involvement with recovery, except that typically, like you said, the path of destruction and that, we're usually the ones at the tail end that if family and community hasn't seen that there's an issue and gotten involved, we get involved through the criminal process. So unfortunately, that's how it is. You know, we would prefer it not get to that point, but there's only so much, we're limited in our resources and what we're able to do. With that said, I've arrested quite a few people who had serious drug abuse issues, and they've gone through recovery. I can actually go and talk with them out in public now, we can carry on normal conversation, and I don't want to toot our own horn, they'll thank us for getting involved, unfortunately, like I said, at the end, but it got them started where they needed to. So from law enforcement, that's kind of where we're at.
All right, thank you. Next question. What role does stigma play in an individual's recovery? I heard somebody say a lot, but... Anyone want to field that?
Okay, you want to go?
I think, I think that stigma, to me, recovery, I didn't answer the last question, but from my standpoint in working in the ER and with trauma, is that recovery for me is identification and prevention. So from my standpoint, we need to identify and try to prevent. So I think stigma plays a big part in the emergency department when we're not identifying someone who needs help. So the stigma really, you know, it makes people uncomfortable to tell someone that they have a problem or need help, and it's uncomfortable for the nursing and the staff to ask because of the stigma. So I think that as far as in the emergency department and in our medical setting, the stigma can really affect someone's availability to recovery if they're not comfortable asking or seeking out, or...
I'll take that into the recovery world. Stigma plays a huge role and a destructive role in that individuals in recovery are not able to reach out for support because they feel judged within the recovery community if they choose, for instance, medication-assisted treatment like Suboxone, Methadone, Vivitrol even has stigma attached to it, just that you, you know, are using one substance instead of another, but in reality, it comes down to the behaviors, and I'm sure that the police could probably testify that people that are taking their Suboxone prescription as prescribed are probably not breaking as many laws as people out there still shooting heroin. So we need to really try to ease the stigma when it comes to MAT and just providing multiple pathways to recovery. It might not be for everyone, but for someone in active addiction for 20 years that's changed their brain chemistry, it probably might be a good choice for them to gain some stability before they taper off without anything, so.
I kind of wanted to lead back on that. In our community, I'm in Washington County, Maryland, and there's a lot of stigma around a lot of the programs we have. People are just, you know, oh, those addicts, or they're always going to be junkies, and we just started a huge harm reduction program. So you can go to our local health department and get clean needles, clean cottons, clean spoons, fresh water, and you can get fentanyl test strips. They do weekly testing for HIV, hepatitis C, and syphilis. And there's a stigma around that. People don't want to go do it because it's like, you know, they're afraid what other people are going to say or do, but in all reality, it's keeping those those numbers of syphilis and hepatitis C and HIV down because they are using clean needles, you know, so. You kind of got to work with people where they are. It is a big, big deal in communities, you know, and they get resources while they're there, so you know, if they get tired of, you know, everybody gets sick and tired of being sick and tired at some point in their life. So when they get to that point, they know they can go there and say, "I'm done. I don't want a clean needle today. How about rehab?" You know, so we need to look at things from different points of view when it comes to that, instead of just putting a stigma on somebody or a label. It's not fair.
Going with stigma, I'm going to speak on this personally. While there are addicts, I don't view them as addicts. They are still individuals. They're individual humans. I make mistakes just like everyone else does. So just because I may be arresting someone for drug possession or DUI, it isn't because I am looking at them as an addict. I am looking at them as an individual in the eyes of the law. And again, I can't, I can't subject someone to my own personal feelings whenever my duty is to uphold the law. So it isn't, you know, you take this uniform off, I might think something completely different than when I'm in uniform. I have a job to do. But we view everyone as individuals, not as drug users or addicts. And like you were saying with the Suboxone, yes, we can definitely see a difference between someone who is using Suboxone as medically prescribed, because there are instances where the Suboxone will be abused. But when someone is following it, you know, following the regimen that their doctor has set up through the recovery process, we definitely tend not to see those individuals involved in the criminal justice system.
Thank you. This was alluded to in one of the responses in the first question that I posed. What is the role of family and friends during the recovery process?
It was very difficult as a parent to love our daughter who was using. We loved our daughter because we knew who our daughter was. She was completely different when she was using. And my wife is here tonight, and you know, we often talk about all the struggles that we went through and her grandparents, who dearly loved her. All the struggles we went through, all the heartache, a lot of sleepless nights. But we always loved her, and we always will. And we would always offer her encouragement. And you know, when I'm out speaking, I share the story that whether I was dropping her off at a sober living home or wherever the case may be, whether it was at our house for a visit, I would always put my hands on her shoulders, and I would look her in the eye, and I'd say, "Leah, your biggest fans are always at home, and we love you." And she would say, "I know, Dad." And three days before her passing, I did that one last time unbeknownst to me. It was always unconditional love, no matter what, no matter what, the hurt, the heartache, it was always unconditional love. But boy, there were some tough times, some very difficult times. And we didn't fully understand, like we do now, we did not fully understand the struggles that our daughter went through each and every day as she was battling this disease. And we found in her journal that, she said, "I don't want, I don't want this. I am trying so hard, but each and every day, it's a struggle." And as I talk to folks in recovery, whether it's two years, five years, three months, 20 years even, I hear one recurring theme, and that is, each day, it's a battle. Each day, it's a battle. And you know, we didn't understand that battle as parents, we did not. But one thing we did understand is, we always loved our daughter, no matter what the circumstances were, and she knew that.
That's what I actually was thinking that was coming through the whole time, was just as a person in recovery, the main role that my family played that was most impactful was just to let me know that they loved me and I had their support, and I knew where I could turn if I needed to. And at the same time, whether I liked it or not, that meant not enabling me. And that will piss anybody off, sorry, pardon my French, in addiction, and that is not a pleasant thing to go through as a parent or as someone in addiction, and I'm sure some of those tough times Mike was referring to. I've been on both sides, and I lost my brother just over two years ago to an opioid death overdose, and you know, you don't know when the last time is going to be that you do certain things. And the main thing that you can do as a family member or as a support is just let the individual know that you care about them and that they have somewhere to turn if they so choose.
Next question. What do individuals in recovery need from this community? You may want to think about that a little bit. What do individuals in recovery need from this community, and this community would be in reference to Fulton County? And maybe even share what the community meant for you as well, possibly.
I'll use Charlene as an example. There is a wonderful, wonderful house in Hagerstown, Maryland called Brooks House. You may have read about it, you may have seen it in the news, but what a story. That community rallied around the cause and built this wonderful sober living home. And when I say build it, I mean the community rallied around and they built it. And my wife and I are privileged to be supporters of Brooks House. And they now, it opened up, what, July? July 8th. And you have 11 residents, 11 ladies. I'll let you share.
Talk a little bit about Brooks House.
I don't need that, that thing just makes me nervous. Brooks House, like Mike was saying, man, the community, when he said build a beautiful house, it's 9,000 square feet of, and it's on a private drive, so it's not in the middle of town. So if they do decide they want to leave, they got to walk. No, no, I'm just joking, everyone. We have eight bedrooms, and it's two girls to a room. We have one bedroom that has two sets of bunk beds in it, so when they first come in, they stay in that room for a week, and then they transition to another room. So they have, it's a family setting. It's the most peaceful place on the planet that I've found. Anyone that comes back that way will tell you there's a sense of peace back there. It's like Brooks' presence. Brooke died of a heroin overdose at 19 years old in April of 2015. Her father was the police sergeant for the Hagerstown Police Department and on the task force. So it doesn't matter where you come from, where you've been, what your family upbringing is, it can still happen. None of her other siblings, you know, were addicts, just Brooke. She struggled back and forth, they had to take her to different places, spent a ton of money, just never anywhere that quite fit her, so it was Brooke's dream that when she got clean, that she was going to build an all-women's facility, so Kevin and Dana, the founders of it, did so when she passed away. Our whole community, when I say our whole community, I can drive you down any street in Hagerstown, someone has donated to Brooks House. People that would moan and complain about addicts while they were there doing it, but still doing it. Every single thing that you see in that house, the floor, the walls, the concrete pour, the grass seed, the doors, the hinges, the light bulbs, every single thing in that house was donated. All the rooms are dedicated to someone. Mike and Robin have the house manager's room dedicated to their daughter Leah, and it's beautiful. We have a separate building that's a stone house that was, and the property that it's built on was given to us by AC&amp;T. It's like a big gas company in our town, so they were gracious enough to donate the property. And there was an old stone house on it, so people came in and they completely redid that, and now it's our, we have a nurse practitioner on site two days a week, so if they need medicated assistant treatment or any other kind of ailment she can take care of, if they get a cold, she can help them. Or if they need an antibiotic, she's there, she can help them. And she's on call with us at all times. We offer IOP and OP, that's intensive outpatient and outpatient group therapies. And we've also reached out to the community starting next week. It will be offered to 15 people outside of our community there, so they can come in and do it as well. Oh my gosh, I could talk about Brooks House for days. Do you want me to keep going?
That's definitely what we're lacking.
But our whole But our whole And so now, because the community gave so much to us, I'm grateful to be a part of Brooks House, helping the girls in recovery. So we give back to the community now. We have a big September is Recovery Awareness Month in Washington County. Washington goes purple. So the girls from Brooks House, we went out and we hung all the purple lights downtown. We put up signs of people that lost their lives to addiction. We worked with United Way a couple of times. Numerous churches in our community, they'll come over and cook dinner for them. The girls actually opened up a church Sunday. They went and it was the grand opening of the church and they actually called us and asked if our girls in recovery could come serve the food and be a part of it. And it was like huge, they served 450 people. So we give back to the community as far as that goes. And they have social enterprises. We have a chocolate business and Robin was one of the originals there. Wilma Wonka, that's what we call her. But so they make chocolate and sell it and it's delicious, it's amazing. They do junk removal. They have a pet salon inside of their house. So every Monday they have a trained groomer that comes in and they groom two dogs from the community. The community drops their pets off. We have a hair salon in our house. On Mondays also, we have a lady that works at a fancy salon in our community and she volunteers her time and comes in on Mondays and gets the girls all dolled up and does different things for them. So, I mean, our community comes together as one, is all I know to say. And I feel like every community should be like that. And that kills the stigma and that kills a lot of things that, you know, comes to us people in recovery. It's difficult some days. Some people don't want to hear our stuff, I'll put it that way. And there's not, not everybody's on board. We've gotten hate mail that they wish that we would all die and we're just a bunch of junkies. So not, we're not 100% supported. But it's an amazing program and a community like this would benefit from something like that.
Don't apologize, thank you. This question actually just came in, which is good. That means somebody heard about this or they asked the question. What is the role of law enforcement, the medical community, and other services in Fulton County when it comes to someone in recovery?
I guess we're up first since we're
I guess you are, but let me make sure I asked the question correctly. Yes, I asked their question correctly.
Can we go alphabetically? Starting out, I mean, it's our intentions to stop the illegal drugs from even making it here. We do that through very proactive traffic enforcement where we're out trying to get stops that will hopefully yield drug arrests, get basically the drugs coming from the source to the people here. So that's us on the front end. We're also on the back end when things have gone to a point where we need to get involved on the criminal justice side and make arrests.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, but I mean, we really don't have a whole lot to do with recovery. Like Trooper Lex said, we're pretty much, we try to be proactive to stop it before it begins. But once it gets to that point and after they've been arrested, then we don't have a whole lot to do with them coming back. But I know that our guys are out there doing stuff. I mean, just since March, we've had 41 DUI arrests that were just drug arrests. So the guys are out there, that was just in the last few months. That's not including regular drug arrests and the things that the guys are doing, the interdiction work they're doing down on the interstate. That's kind of our part in it, try to stop it before it happens.
There are definitely things behind the scenes that people won't see. Our Bureau Patrol is very active with Pennsylvania DUI Association. They'll actually send some of our experts out to talk with doctors. They'll go to different hospitals where they'll be having panels very much like this. But to better educate the doctors on what law enforcement is seeing on the back end of prescription drugs. And what law enforcement and doctors, pharmacists, everyone involved on the prescription side can do to hopefully have less addicts out there, less possibility for someone turning into an addict. So there's definitely stuff that we may not be directly involved in, but people who work in law enforcement are out doing.
I'd say by like you guys carrying Narcan in our county, you're giving people the chance to get into recovery.
Yes, absolutely.
Try saving their lives, you know. And in places like rural Hagerburg, a lot of times it's the police that arrive first and whatever it is. And, you know, I know for a fact that it's been put to good use and saved lives and that's what it's all about. Give them the chance to choose recovery.
Every time we leave station, we have Narcan with us.
I know in Washington County, our law enforcement, they get together with some people in recovery, some people in our health department, and they walk around to a drug take back. So they go just from house to house and say, "Is there any pills in your house that you're not using anymore?" Because, you know, kids get into Xanax and anxiety meds or Percocets or OxyContin's, whatever it might be. And it sounds like it might not be doing anything, but they've gathered hundreds of pounds of narcotics out of people's homes that could have been into the hands of somebody abusing them. And that's a big deal, that's, they're involved with people in recovery. We also, we do a lot of peer support in our county now. We have someone like myself kind of and like Ally down there in labor and delivery. So if someone delivers a baby that is addicted, we can possibly try to get some information there to the mother at that point in time, see if we can intervene at that point. We have some that ride on the ambulance crews. So for people that are overdosing, we can intervene at that time also. So it's starting to catch on for different agencies. We have them at the jails now. So just different things.
From the medical standpoint, I think it starts with EMS. The administration of Narcan can be a gateway to recovery. And then I think once they get to the hospital, like I said earlier, a lot of it relies on identification. Sometimes they, someone needs someone to identify that they have a problem when they're not willing to admit it themselves. And then I also think once that can be identified, that there's a need, making sure that warm handoff happens to someone who can get them the recovery that they need. I know that I don't know a lot about the recovery and what steps happen, but I know that if someone comes, who to send them to. And I think utilizing those resources and I'm gonna throw us under the bus a little bit, the ER. But I think that we could come a long way in identifying our, we ask one question and it's, "Do you use drug and alcohol?" And there's not a question about prescription drugs. There's not, you know, it's not detailed. And sometimes that might not be what that patient's coming in for, but they might be crying for help in a different way. Just to throw some numbers, because I think sometimes knowing data is empowering. But of the 9,300 patients we saw so far this year, 2,407 of them came in with complaints of pain that could be associated with chronic or seeking, not acute. So we play a big role in making sure that we're not prescribing medications that we really shouldn't be or that we should be referring to family practice. I think that, you know, in the past, there's been a lot of prescription opioid drugs given. And then that leads down the road to addiction. And that kind of hits home for me, so. So really, that's where I think the hospital plays a role, warm handoff, identification, and really cutting back the stigma. I think it's really challenging to oversee the stigma and I think that's where the medical profession really needs to stand out and get people the help they need.
So I'm gonna, I had another question formulated, but both of you have posed a question and this is my own. I apologize to the audience, I will give you guys a chance in here. I guess then my question would be approximately, how many overdoses have you responded to as the state police? Because you'd mentioned 41 DUI arrests. And how many times, if you could tell me an approximate, maybe you can, that's fine. Approximately, how many times have you had to administer Narcan? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, you can defer if you like, it's just a question that's popped into my head. And then just because the medical folks have sort of the same question, how many, how much administration of Narcan have you done, if you know approximately? And if you don't, that's fine, that's just, that's a Woody question, not a, not a, it's just something popped in my head.
The administration of Narcan, I personally have not given anybody Narcan.
Okay.
No, I haven't.
Since I've been doing it, since we've been carrying Narcan, I can only think of a few, few times that it's been administered. I mean, there may have been more.
And then, there's quite a few times that there will be EMS on site who may have been responding, not with the ambulance, but like a volunteer firefighter, that we will provide them with the Narcan because they just don't carry it in their vehicle like we do. Some may, but then they as medical personnel will actually administer the Narcan, will carry it and provide it to them. I've never personally administered Narcan to someone. I'm glad I haven't had to do it. I mean, I wish none of us would have to.
We're all trained in it, we've all, and we get updated once a year. So everybody knows how to do it if it comes up. And I have faith that our guys would do it and they can do it. It's just like Trooper Lex said, a lot of times, you know, the ambulance is there for you to administer. There've only been, off the top of my head, I can only think of about three different times that we as a station have done it, and that's within the past few years. I think the other question was, what, how many overdoses have we responded to personally?
Yes, yes, if you, approximately, again, that's, I'll qualify, that's my question.
Yeah, me personally, I've only responded to just a handful, four or five maybe. The latest one that we had, I think, was what a fellow had taken a break at work and went out in his car and shot up. That was a few months ago, but it's not a terrible amount. I don't know how many Trooper Lex has responded to.
We'll get, you'll hear overdose and it may come across that way. Some people will take more prescription than they should, either by accident or something. And it won't be to the level of overdose, but it will come in through 911 as an overdose. And then we, between us and EMS, we'll get the balls rolling that those people are taken care of at the ER. So while, I'm sure we could go back and pull the number of overdoses that we've gone to, it may not be what you're thinking of an overdose in someone's flat line on the ground and you need to administer Narcan.
At the same time, I think most people in recovery don't want law enforcement involved. So if they come to or wake up on their own, they're probably not gonna let you know, "Hey, I just overdosed, but I'm okay now," you know? And now that civilians can carry Narcan, that's another thing, you know, your friend overdoses, you're both on probation, you administer the Narcan and the police aren't gonna be notified. So I don't know if that means that there are more than there is actually being reported, but for the amount of people flowing through treatment facilities in our area, I would say that it's probably more than just a couple. But unfortunately, like you said, the stigma, like they're not calling the cops saying they overdosed. You know, they're getting caught in the act and, you know.
I don't have data as far as Narcan administration goes, but I know for year-to-date 2019, we've had 20 patients come in with the diagnosis and chief complaint solely of overdose. Those numbers don't reflect the altered mental status or lethargy complaints that end up being reversed by Narcan.
Thank you for, both of you, for, or all three of you for answering my question, thank you. How does the community encourage and support the recovery process? We've heard about a need for understanding. We've heard about an actual, the need for recovery housing. Understanding and recovery housing are both ideas that we probably, everyone in this room could agree to, but they're out here. What, what can we do tomorrow? What can we do next week?
Since the mic's in front of me. One thing that I noticed a lot more are the Project Safe billboards and some things in the newspaper. I think just letting community that isn't directly related to addiction or their families, just hearing about it and not hiding from it. I think just people knowing that it's out there and that there's an issue makes it easier to talk about and easier to get community participation. And so I'm hoping that by people that aren't addicted and who are families of addiction, people trying to recover from addiction, that they feel like now they can reach out because everyone's talking about it, instead of waiting for someone else to talk for them, so.
We definitely need more meetings in our area. And I think that's part of What you were saying, people are in the shadows. If the stigma was reduced, more people would attend the meetings or more parents would feel comfortable talking to their friends like, "Oh yeah, my child goes to a Narcotics Anonymous meeting on Thursday night in McConnellsburg and maybe your kid could benefit, but right now the stigma is so high." You know, there's probably one in two people have somebody that they know in active addiction and they're not talking about it. And that's the first thing we can do is just start the conversation, I think.
I agree with that. And you talk about kids. We joke around sometimes at our Narcotics Anonymous meetings because our kids, like my kids, have friends in Narcotics Anonymous. You know what I mean? We're a community. You can ride by a meeting and everybody in the town knows that's an N A meeting. That's an A A meeting right there. And our kids talk about it, they're educated, they know what's going on. And our health department and some other people, like with the Maryland Heroin Awareness Advocates, they go to the schools, they talk to the kids, they educate people. You know, they don't, somewhere along the line, they stopped educating kids on it. Not that it helped all of us, but we were educated. So I mean, yeah, meetings are very important. You know, kids get an understanding and they feel the love and the unity that's there also, you know. You know, some children don't have that. Some children need a place to talk about, "My mom does this" or some, you know, just, "My dad's knotted out on the couch." You know, it's uncomfortable for the children and the families too, so there needs to be education there. Or at least somewhere where they can tell somebody how they feel.
Going to, I've been asking questions for about 45 minutes. And I know from the panel's perspective, that probably seems like a long time. But I do want to open up the opportunity for anyone in the audience. If you have a question for one of the panelists or the entire panel or a segment of it, feel free to ask your question, just keep in mind that we are respectful of the position that we are respectful of the positions they hold, the lives they've led, and them as human beings, so. Yes, sir?
This is for a lady, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, Brooks House, she's curious, does the community keep the upkeep of the house and all the food, say that everybody eats, the upkeep of the house, does the community pay for that also?
We are starting to get some income in, but we still have people that are like, they donate yearly. We have people in the community that just constantly donate food, it's hunting season, people are already saying they're bringing deer in, a whole deer, we get a whole beef donated.
So, that the, the people that go in there for treatment don't have to pay at all?
It's billed through their insurance. We can only bill through...
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
But even, everyone in the house maintains the house?
Yes.
Yeah, they work to maintain the climate, has to take care of the property.
They mow the lawn, they do all that.
Other questions from the audience? Yes, sir?
Good evening to all of you. We've talked about demand and recovery, very, very mighty questions, why? And I'd like to address the troopers, first of all, thank you for your commitment to service in the state and the community, many times for an unappreciative effort. I'm new in Fulton County, here about eleven years, but I come from a very big city, nine million people, and I was a silver servant, working over the poorest, toughest neighborhoods of my boroughs. And I've seen the effects of drugs. The worst I've seen was probably one with a beating on my left and belly on the cell and cell on the street. So, when I get away from after a tragedy, of course, and I moved, retired, settled in, well, northern Fulton County, the northern, the top, top. And it's all I hear is about the ongoing drug problem we all have here. And I've asked this a couple of times among people who are here roamers, but I'm not a roamer, I'm not. I'd like to ask the troopers, and I'm prepared to hear where underfunded, understaffed, can't talk about an ongoing investigation. You know, the knee girdles, we get all the time. Actually, recently, I spoke to a trooper on the record, he says, I wouldn't believe what we do, and then the courts cut them loose. What I'd like to address, troopers, every time you get an overdose, a drug sale, a DUI, drug-related stop, and you squeeze them, where I came from, there are many dams, there are rapids, and the bad guys chase them, to run down. We live in a borough here of fifteen hundred people. How do we not come up with a common name or names over and over? I'm sure you have your frequent flyers and your products. Can you tell me or address to the room, sir, what you've done for enforcement on sale? Thank you.
I'm not exactly sure what you want me to say, I mean, we have undercover police officers out there doing their job, we have interdiction programs, we have troopers that are specifically assigned to go out and try to root this type of stuff out. I mean, without getting into specifics, I mean, is that what you're looking for? Or I mean...
Well, I, I'd like to, yes, we have a common name or names that crop up.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
And they're working in to stem it out and so on.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have things that are going on, absolutely.
So, it should be a multi-pronged approach between the community and law enforcement, correct?
Not in that capacity, no. I mean, we do our investigations, that doesn't involve anybody but law enforcement.
Well, we talked about Narcan and how raiding has been to still suffering, and when you have got a frequent flyer, for example, say, there's more than this bigger problem here, you make the arrests, and is it in fact a problem with the courts that cut them loose or there's no teeth in enforcement?
I don't think so, I mean, I think the courts are doing what they need to do.
I'm sorry, trooper in the car, a lot of...
I said, I personally don't think so, I think the courts are doing what they're supposed to be doing. I don't know if Trooper Lek has any more insight into that or not, but I, I don't think we're arresting people when they're just getting cut loose, I think they're...
No, you've got a common name or names over and over and over.
And one, one thing that's interesting about Fulton County, it's a small community, everyone knows everyone's business, and while a name may come up over and over again, the, there's only so much we can do. We, we can't go raiding someone's house just because a name keeps coming up over and over again. I mean, we have constitution and everything that sets forth what we are allowed and not allowed to do. Another thing I have noticed, at least within my arrests, with it being a small community, you're talking about the squeeze. Those that we have custody and are under arrest, while they want to help themselves, they're also, because of being such a small community, are not as willing to give up names because it is a small community. Everyone knows that, oh, so-and-so is just arrested, they probably know it before some guys at the station even know. It's getting out, everyone's going to know that, oh, they were arrested, now so-and-so is getting arrested, they're a snitch, so people tend to not want to answer those questions whenever we ask. We're always, with everyone we arrest, whenever it's drug-related, we're always trying to get more, to get our license involved, and, you know, if there's a problem somewhere, what we can do...
Oh, we get...
Right. Also with that, individuals, some people aren't willing to mention a name because that's who their supplier is. You know, they may not have gone through the recovery process, or they may have and have failed. That's their supplier, they don't want to give up the person who is going to be the one most likely giving them the fix they need to keep from getting sick.
You mentioned the medical, I just want to, I'm trying to, just to make that one clear, our role, our, our role in the ER and in the medical profession is to treat the patient, we do, we never get EMS involved, so we are a safe place, if you need to drop off, then...
You're asking for less than twenty-five percent of your question data to actually answer. While your experience with both junkies are, they will lie to your teeth. Because we're not dealing with people who have been at war, because they're so under influence, they just don't know what they're doing. Well, we talk about the medical community. I understand, I remember wrong, being new in the area, there's two pharmacies in town. Why, you cannot, within the legal reasons? I won't say subpoena their records, but they know who the pill pushers are and address the medical community. Again, we talk about frequent flyers.
I'll speak as somebody that used to shoot heroin and seek drugs and prescription drugs, since it is such a small town, most of us sourced our drugs from outside of the community. So, the people, we might, you know, they might pull us over when we're already high, when we get back here with like the little bit of drugs we have left, but, you know, we're close to Baltimore, like you said, you're from New York, that's only a four-hour trip away, Philadelphia's two and a half hours down the turnpike. I mean, in reality, it's probably the feds that would be doing the investigating.
Again, how hard is to take their records and go over a common name?
I wanna, you had mentioned controlling the prescription, and that is happening.
Yes, because I just want you to make your surgery capable, you had to see with the doctor who prescribed you a painkiller, he was like beside himself.
Yeah, we actually, in the ER, when we prescribe, if we are prescribing...
Well, why would it take twenty years?
I can't answer that.
No, I can answer that, alright. But it's just more to look, we talk about the legal prescription drugs, but the answer could be check the records and see where it's stemming from. It's just, the pharmacist is just trying to make a little point. Alright, whatever.
That is one, we talk about the community.
Yes, so, I think we're thinking the same thing, so when, in emergency, any, any metal, any person who provides, who prescribes narcotics, we have a system that we look up, that patient's name, and it tells us if they have any active or old narcotic prescriptions.
And so does the pharmacy now, basically, those tell you, I understand, but it took twenty years to figure that out, and then it's done, you're right. Well, this is a regulation nonetheless.
But another, from a hospital standpoint, you know, our, our quality and our satisfaction also plays a lot on patients' pain control, so, you know, when you, that's also...
Well, thank you, Powell, thank you for your question.
Any other questions from the audience? Yes, sir?
This is, this is for Samantha, you said that in a year, the emergency, ninety-three hundred emergency calls, right? You came in, twenty-four, all of a sudden, it reflected what we're doing, seeking?
No, no, not seeking. No, yeah, no, those are, those are the, chief complaints, like dental pain, chronic back pain, lower extremity fracture, that can lead to the prescription of narcotics, that can lead to addiction. That's just the number of, the twenty-six percent have the diagnosis that makes them predisposed, is what I was...
Other questions from the audience?
I have one. A friend of mine was on the way to work in Bedford County, they were pulled over and charged for a DUI, being on the bus. Is that, I mean, it's, why does that, it's just like any prescription drug? If you were, despite being legally prescribed a prescription drug, the verbiage of DUI is a substance, regardless of what schedule it is, you know, you have your different schedules, impairing your ability to safely operate a vehicle. So, based on, and I don't know the details of, of that arrest, based on what the trooper observed and then filled sobriety in that, we're able to determine whether or not someone's impaired to the level that would prevent them from safely operating a vehicle. You can, you can go and get prescribed, a narcotic, OxyContin, you can go and get prescribed that, just because you're legally prescribed that does not mean you can drive. I mean, they were arrested because he had lost the odds, he was on the way to work, and I just, I think it's awful that he was arrested for that. His letters were dead, his family's...
Yeah. All done.
No.
My time, I think we were talking...
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna be the boss here and take control, we're not gonna debate each other, we're not gonna Q and A the police or put them on, they're volunteering their time. Ma'am, did you get an explanation at least, a little bit of an understanding?
Just to have another question, do they do a blood test to see if the level of D was...
Yes, yes, there's absolutely a blood test that would have been done.
But it was below the grade level, I mean, he wasn't...
You have to understand, ma'am, we don't, I mean, we're just getting the details, we don't know nothing about the case, so I, it's hard for us to sit and say yes or no, but, you know, we, I have to go, did this happen in Fulton County?
No, Bedford.
Okay, well, I worked in Bedford too, for several years, I'd have to say that the guys that I knew over there, if they're making an arrest, they're making an arrest because they saw something that was dangerous. So, he was doing something that caught their attention, and when he pulled him over, they felt that he was impaired, and he was arrested for that. But, like I said, we, we really can't sit here and say yes or no to this or that without knowing the facts of everything. Yeah, absolutely, like you said, you can be, you can be impaired on a prescribed drug,
So, the title of our program is What's Next? And our panel has now been under the spotlight for over, well over an hour. I do wanna ask them a question, and it's a question that I can pose. What is next for the individual who is in recovery who calls Fulton County home, whether it's Needmore, McConnellsburg, you know, Crystal Springs, Houston Town? From each of your perspectives here on the panel, what's next? And what would you leave as your parting thoughts or takeaways for the audience this evening? What is, or what are those items that you would want people to go home and go, okay, I, I heard this, I wanna think about it, and this is what I can do with that information? And honestly, I budgeted, you know, a little bit of time for you to compose that. What's next?
We need, and we talked about this in a previous question, we need a recovery home in Fulton County, we need a sober living home. And it doesn't have to be as grandiose as Brooks House, but we need a facility where folks can feel comfortable, have themselves surrounding themselves with peers. We need to continue the education. We need to continue to love our loved ones that are fighting addiction. Every day, my wife and I battle grief. We don't wake up one day and say, well, I've conquered that, let's move on to the next thing. Every day, it's there with us. The triggers are overpowering. We have since created a foundation, Leah's Legacy, and we distribute purple bags filled with all kinds of essentials to women in sober living homes. There's a story behind that, I won't go into detail there, I would just say that you would, if you could go to leah'slegacy.net, read her story. See, I can't hug my daughter anymore. I can hold on to this picture and hold on to the memories, but this is real. This is real. And so is this crisis. And I'm not trying to plug in a lot of drama here, but it's real. And if, if we don't do something, if this community doesn't do something, it's only gonna get worse. My wife and I struggle each and every day. struggle each and every day. You know, and my wife said the other week, she said, "Every day is filled with Leah." How true. As a community, I want our days to be filled with hope and love. And I want this community to care.
I will say, as they're passing the mic, if you get a chance, check out Leah's Legacy. If you have not done so, please do so. It's a pretty powerful story. Thank you, Mike. What else would we want to let our audience with?
I would say, when you start the conversation, rally together as a community, you know, the, the police, the, just people in general, the medical field, get together with your health department. Hold an event, let people know it's okay to ask for help and to talk about it. You know, it's, you got to start somewhere. Get in the schools, educate your own children, educate your grandchildren, whoever it might be in your life. People need to know it's okay to talk about it and ask for help. That's a, that's a huge barrier. You ask anyone in recovery, and they'll tell you, "Those were the hardest three words to say, I need help." So start the conversation, kill the stigma, do something about it. Don't just talk about it, be about it. You know, that's, that's what I'm going to leave it with.
Any other parting thoughts?
I'm still trying to get it in a format that would make any sense. I will help anyone who needs help. Any trooper will do that. We, like you're saying, you got to ask for help first. And one thing I see over and over again, families know something is wrong, but because of the stigma, don't seek the help, or try to get their affected loved one on the path to help. And I would much rather help people by being a good Samaritan than have to do my job and arrest someone. So, whenever I encounter people, I might get to spend five minutes with them, it might be two hours. I don't know their life. I don't know what's normal for them. I can't say, you know what, this person's an addict, I can't. There are indicators, based on behavior, that I can conclude that they may be an addict, but I don't know. None of us know until it's too late. So, families, and the community in general, you know something's going on, speak up about it. And it may be something as simple as, okay, a petty theft, you might not realize it, petty theft. But that person who committed that theft may be doing it to get a little bit of money to feed their addiction. And if that theft is never reported, we might not have the involvement with that individual that's going to get them on the path of recovery.
Thank you.
I think that, I said it numerous times, but the question is identifying the people who aren't asking for help. And as I sit here and listen to the wealth of knowledge up here that I don't have, you know, I think I'm asking for something here, not something I can provide, but maybe something I need. How do we ask that's not offensive? I think that I would want to help anyone. And maybe I don't ask because I'm afraid that you're going to think I'm judging you. So, I guess maybe if anyone has, is there education out there on this? Is there training on teaching medical professions how to ask the right questions? We have suicide training and how to ask, but do, do we have courses on how to ask somebody if they're an addict? Or if they're coming for back pain, is it because you're seeking? How do we ask that without offending, and how do we get the help you need without offending? And I think that that might keep us from really identifying people who might be crying for help. And so that's not me saying that I have something to provide, but if anyone here has something that they can give me, I would be more than happy to take that back to our facility, so.
Well, for the recovery community, I would say my takeaway would be just to support each other and not be judgmental. We live in such a small community that we can't afford to judge each other on each other's recovery. Like the trooper said, like, you know, I don't know your whole life story, but if you're telling me that your behavior is different than what it was prior, and that you're living a better life and you're in recovery, I'm going to take that at face value and treat you with respect and kindness. And if you're still struggling, I'm still going to treat you with respect and kindness. So, that would be my feedback. Be kind.
Closing remark. I want to thank the panel. The information I started scribbling down was never meant to be rude. I was writing down as fast as I could some of the things you were saying. I want to thank the audience. I know there were probably times where, in your life, things you heard made you emotional, maybe things that you heard made you think. But what I take away from our panelists this evening is a couple of things. Support in recovery. Hope in recovery. Love in recovery. And those three things, and this is what I've heard from this group as a collective this evening, will lead to understanding, commitment, education, action, and hopefully, success for our community. Thank you again, audience. I know you gave up a Wednesday evening. A special thanks to the panel. I personally, and on behalf of the folks here in Fulton County, I do thank you for your time and your knowledge, and the work that you do every single day, work that I could not do. So, thank you very much. That concludes our evening.
Do you guys look at like, the cow scale for withdrawal, to like, look at, like, look at them? Or ask her if they have like goosebumps, or chills, restless legs, big pupils, stuff like that?
I mean, that's, no, I mean, in the general population, no.